Good evening, welcome to the February 26th City Council Housing Workshop. Thanks for being here. This meeting is called to order. Roll call please.
Jeff Almond.
Here.
Wendy Evans.
Here.
Mary Paulson.
Here.
Phil Schleyer.
Here.
Patricia Wilkins.
Here.
Joe Risa.
Here.
And I'm Brown.
Here. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move to approve the agenda in amended form. I would like to include housing for South Haven in general, so after, after Overton site and South Haven in general.
A question, Mary. Is something to talk on there?
Okay, we have questions. I don't want the agenda to limit us to just the Overton site.
I don't have anything prepared on anything about.
No, but I mean, I don't want our comments to be limited to the Overton site.
They don't have to be, but I don't have anything to prepare on anything above the Overton site.
Understood.
So can you state what your amendment motion, or your motion is to insert?
After site, after Overton site, and well, it would be all, they would occur simultaneously. So it would be Overton site, oh, if, and South Haven in general. I see what you're saying is that you wouldn't have anything to present on housing options. I guess then it would be a 5.8. I just, unless you could clarify that we would be able to speak on more than just Overton site with regard to our comments?
Yes. It's workshop, so it's not going to be rigid or or any, so.
Then I would, I will withdraw my motion and approve the agenda as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All the figures say aye or aye, opposed? The motion passes and the agenda is approved. It is now time for public comment, and you will have two minutes to speak, and the microphone is over there.
Is there a timer somewhere? It's like how much time I have?
We have it here.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Nancy Nam, 125 Elkenberg. First of all, I think we need affordable housing in South Haven. I've stood up here before, so I don't want to be called a NIMBY or racist or anything else. I've been called in the past. But I am here again to state the obvious, which is why I don't understand why we're having this workshop today before the public has been shown a remediation plan for the Overton property. And it's gone through the state. They said we needed to have a remediation plan before any building could happen there. And we're here again tonight with Ryan. Nothing against you at all, but we're paying a consultant to come in here today and talk about what type of housing we're going to put in before we even know what the remediation plan is for that site. We made the same mistake the first time around. We put the cart before the horse. It ended up costing the city a lot of money. I know in the paper, certain people were called obstructionists, me being one of them, but all I care about is the safety of the people living on that property and the safety of the people in the surrounding area. So I don't know why this is being talked about already. This is a priority setting meeting. I thought that was happening in March 11, and I don't know. I'm just confused. So, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Elise Beck, 879 Manuel Boulevard. I seem to often follow the woman before, Nancy, with a lot of the same, with a lot of the same comments, but I too feel that we are putting the cart before the horse. We have already been told that it needs to be remediated. There is arsenic, there is lead, there is some really dangerous chemicals in there. I too am for affordable housing, affordable houses. I am for affordable houses where people can live, raise families on the property once it is remediated property, not phases all at one time. I know Chicago sometimes is a bad word here, but we can all learn from things. And on December 5th, Brighton Site, they were building a development. They spent millions of dollars. This is just two months ago, millions of dollars. And then the EPA shut it all down with an 800-page report on contamination. And if I had my glasses, I could read you the quote. Let me see. Anyway, you can read it yourselves. Just look up Brighton Site. But basically, what they said was that we cannot build on this kind of contamination and put residents in danger. So of course, the governor and the mayor fighting over whose fault it was, as usual in Chicago, but it's a major problem. And I don't think we want to put any of our residents in danger like that, people who live near there, the people who will live there. We went through this with Habitat. We tried to cut the corners. We tried to say the environment didn't matter. MISHDA shut it down. They will do so again. So I think we need to have, get our acts together and really focus before we start all these dreams and haven't fallen apart yet. Thank you.
Good evening. I am George E. Bright, and I live at 214 Superior Street. I fear South Haven is headed in the wrong direction for its future because it does not attract young adults and young families as permanent residents. Over the last 34 years, there has been a 35% decrease in the number of permanent residents with a 10% drop in 2020 to 3,964. South Haven's aging population, decreasing number of permanent residents, and inflated housing prices do not attract young adults and young families. This is shameful. Last meeting, you had an easy decision to make, not to decide. Here are three more challenging decisions. Since the city issues short-term rental certificates, the certificates should belong to the city and not to absentee landlords to profit from. Decision two, harder, but leaders make hard decisions. Reduce that number of certificates by 10% each year to help reduce housing prices and keep South Haven from being a place to flip houses. Hardest decision three, revisit Overton. Habitat says South Haven lacked the political will to do the project. Prove them wrong. Avoid giving up on Overton just because the obstacles are difficult. To paraphrase President Kennedy, decide to build Overton because it is difficult. If you need to issue a municipal bond to solve environmental problems, decide and do it. Not deciding will make it more expensive in the future, and the health hazard still exists. Please be honest, so grandchildren and great-grandchildren can love South Haven, too.
All right. Well, that concludes our little comment portion. We'll just go ahead and get into the guided facilitation of the housing, the Overton site. What we've done here is we've brought in our consultant, Ryan Kilpatrick, to kind of, one, set the table and kind of explain any changes that have gone through with housing options, ID programs coming from MISHDA, or recent housing tools that have passed in 2022, but also to kind of go through a guided facilitation with the council. What do you want to do with the Overton site? We did have the project with the Habitat company that ultimately did not go forward. We didn't, we do know some things that we learned about the site. We also know that the Overton site is not very large. It's just under six acres. So we know that what's going to be out there is going to be an issue for council to decide. How dense do you want it to be? I do want to maybe address some of the ground field questions, and I know Ryan will address it over at the top layer, but I wouldn't say ground field is going to be an impediment here. I've been asked, you know, what's on the site? We have all of it on the city's website. You can go in, you can read the environmental statements. But also, keep in mind, if you, like what you see in Harbor Shores, which was a EPA superfund site, it was radioactive, there is no housing on it. So that should not be an impediment. Groundfield issue should not be an impediment. It can be redeveloped depending on what's out there and what you need to do to mitigate the rest of the state's hazards. So with that, let's go ahead and have Ryan come on up and serve this guided facilitation.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Hi. Thanks for having me back. Y'all have heard from me a few times, and I can't tell you that I have astonishingly new news for you today, but what we're going to do briefly is recap some of the information that you've heard over the last couple of years, updated numbers relative to what does it cost to build, what are the tools that are available to build it. And then, as Kate mentioned, we're going to go through a really quick kind of facilitated process. We've got a QR code and a survey that will ask just the council members to respond to, to get your reactions to a handful of questions. And throughout, anytime you have questions, you want to talk about something, I'm happy to pause and have those conversations. But what I want to do first is do just a little bit of level setting around what is the market doing right now, so that as you make some prioritization comments, you've got that context in the back of your mind. So really quickly, I think this is a slide that I actually share a lot. I've been doing these presentations all over Western Michigan, who've been up in Traverse City, Meskeenham, and Grand Rapids, and Kalamazoo. And one of the things that I think is important is setting housing in the framework of the broader conversation for the community. We're not just building housing for the sake of building housing. We're thinking about housing in the context of a thriving economy, a resilient local workforce, and in a sustainable environment, right? And so as we think about, what are the reasons that we want to build housing? It's to promote a more sustainable and resilient community, as well as to create a sense of belonging, right? So what I wouldn't suggest is that we just build housing for the sake of housing and that it be isolated from the rest of the community, but rather it becomes woven into the fabric and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. And so with that context, what we want to do is talk about the importance of housing as a driver of economic activity. You've got a lot of local employers that we interviewed last spring and early summer and talked to about their need to be able to attract additional workforce that was earning anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 a year, but was unable to find housing in a local market. Now, in some regards, that was because there wasn't anything available on the market in their price range that was also of interest to them. They couldn't find a product that matched their needs. And in some instances, it was because they could find housing, but it was 20 or 30 minutes away, right? And so that additional commute became a barrier to those potential employees who also had job opportunities in Meskeenham, or Alligan, or Ionia. And we heard from multiple employers who essentially said, we need housing in order to attract a workforce and grow the economy. So really briefly, a handful of kind of typical middle-income jobs that tend to be very important to local communities. One is our local public education team. Average teacher salary in the state of Michigan for a teacher with at least 10 years of experience is $66,000 a year. They're the sole income earner. Their maximum housing budget, and we established this by taking 30% of their gross income. Their maximum housing budget is about $1,600 a month. The median price, the median cost to own a home in South Haven today, if you were going to buy a house in South Haven today, is $2,600 a month. Now, median sale price right now in South Haven is $352,000. If you finance that 90% mortgage at 6.8% interest, which is the going interest rate for mortgages right now, that's the cost for your mortgage plus taxes. So you know that our typical teacher moving into the market today is priced out of the for-sale housing. Similarly, right? When we talk about some of our essential workers, the workers that we really need to be in the community on a regular day-to-day basis, the average salary for EMTs is about $35,000 a year, which means their maximum housing budget is about $900 a month. Our median rent in South Haven right now is $1,300 if we're averaging one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units. The median rent is $1,300 a month. So it's exceedingly difficult for some of those emergency healthcare workers to be able to afford to live close to where they work. And some of those healthcare workers, it's really important that they live close to where they work. Pharmacy tech, same thing, right? Their maximum housing budget is about $1,000 a month. Median rent is $1,300. Manufacturing, right? One of the things that we heard from several employers was they're trying to attract engineers and skilled technical manufacturers. They're earning enough to afford rent, right? So being able to attract them initially, as long as there are units available, they can afford the rent. But being able to afford a home that's for sale is much more difficult. Now, if they're willing to commute 20, 30 minutes in from the interior of the state, that gets a little bit easier. The question is, are there houses that are within the expectation of those households available to them in the marketplace? And then lastly, our cashiers, city of South Haven runs on, in part, on a tourist economy, and being able to sustain our retail workers and our restaurant workers is also an important component to being able to sustain the economy in South Haven. So it doesn't seem like anybody disagrees. I just want to be able to level set about what are folks able to afford in the market today and what is available in the market, what are those price points? All right. So you've seen this data before. What's important to recognize is we've talked a lot about what are the housing types and price points that are most needed. It's important to know, in the city of South Haven today, about 2/3 of all households are single adults or two adults with no kids at home. And roughly 1/3, a little more than 1/3, are families with kids. And so what we want to be doing is thinking about how do we provide housing that accommodates all of those household types, not just single-family homes for families with kids, but also homes for single adults or for two adults who are choosing not to have kids. Or two adults who had kids and their kids have moved out now and they're ready to downsize, right? Thinking about housing solutions for each of those household types, not just the traditional single family, is going to be really important as we move forward, because one of the really important things to understand is creating movement in the market creates more affordability. So even if some of the products being provided is being provided for empty nesters who want to downsize, they're downsizing out of a larger home that a family with kids could move into, right? And so they create an opening in the marketplace. And even if that home that becomes available is expensive, the movement in the market often creates a chain reaction throughout the market. And so at some point, we get to the stage where a lesser-income household is able to move into something that wasn't available to them. Now, I want to be clear, this is different from trickle-down economics, right? We often hear a reaction to that, that this is, we're talking trickle-down. What we're talking about is filtering. It's a similar concept, except it all happens locally, right? When we talk about giving tax breaks to billionaires and eventually that trickles down into the economy, it's a very different story because it's not localized in the local housing market. What we're talking about here is creating a new unit that allows for a chain reaction of families in South Haven to be able to move up or move down in the marketplace. And so not every housing unit that gets created goes to a South Haven family or from a South Haven family. Part of what's happening is we're able to attract new people into the market. But if we fail to build an adequate amount of housing, what we end up with is a lot of competition and not enough supply, and prices continuing to be driven up. And we did, a few months ago, we did do a study of the seasonal and short-term rental units and their impact on the market. And they do have a sizable impact on the market. So we don't want to short-change that as another component that needs to be addressed. But as we think about the 2/3 of households that are either single adults or two adults, we also want to think about the disparity between the number of studio and one-bedroom housing units or homes that are available and the number of households that are one or two persons. And so on the left, what we're seeing is the number of studio and one-bedroom units, which is just under 200. And on the right, what we're seeing is the number of households who are either single adults or two adults with no kids. And that's a little over 1,600, right? So we've got this mismatch. And what I'm not saying is every single person wants to live in a studio apartment, right? That's not the argument. The idea here is we have a mismatch between the product that's available and the household sizes. And so what we really want to do is key into what do people want in the marketplace and what can they afford, and are matching the types of housing that are needed and wanted and affordable to the families and the household sizes that are actually in the city of South Haven. So I mentioned this earlier, and you've heard this from me a few times before. When we say affordable, what I'm not necessarily saying is that it's subsidized, or that it's Section 8, or that there's some kind of philanthropy or government funding. What I'm saying when I say affordable is that the person who lives there can afford it. And what that means, and we get this standard both from HUD, the federal guidelines, as well as from traditional financial planners, what that means is that the family that lives there or the individual isn't spending more than 30% of their gross income on the cost of housing. And for rental units, that means rent and utilities. For for-sale units, that means mortgage, taxes, insurance. All those things added up shouldn't be more than 30% of gross income. So later, either in this discussion or another discussion, we can talk about affordable, like subsidized affordable, versus affordable meaning, is it affordable to the people who live there? Because part of what we're going to want to explore with you all here this evening is, for whom do we want to make sure housing is available? What are the income points that are most important to you as a council and to the community? And that's a tough decision, right? Because Overton is not going to be a site that can accommodate all of the housing needs for everybody in South Haven, whoever wants to live here, right? It's going to be a very small subset of the total need in the city of South Haven, and an even smaller subset of the total need in the region. And so based on what we know about the site conditions and the cost to clean out the site, as well as the availability of federal and state resources, as well as the availability of local resources and the number of units you're willing to put on the site, those are all constraints that are going to impact how many units can we get or how many homes, and what's going to be the cost of those homes. And that's going to start to dictate, okay, who can afford to live here. So I just want to make sure that we're establishing, we can't solve all of our housing needs on that one site, but I want to give the context of what's possible. So that leads us to, what does it actually cost to build housing today? And unfortunately, the answer to that isn't a better answer than I had the last time in front of you. It's frankly a worse answer. So since 2019, pre-COVID, we've seen construction costs go up about 35% over that period of time. Now, the good news is wages also rose by about the same amount generally across the board. Wages are up quite a bit, close to 40% since 2019, but not for every job, right? There are some folks, there are some employees who did not see a 30% or 40% wage increase over that period of time. Some folks saw a larger wage increase. So what I want to make sure we're able to do is recognize that if the average cost to build new housing is $265 a square foot, the larger the home, the more expensive it is, right? Like the simple math of that. Now, the more complicated thing is adding a bedroom is less expensive than adding a kitchen, right? So if we were to build, the difference between a 1,600-square-foot house and a 2,400-square-foot house, if we have the same number of kitchens and bathrooms, the cost per square foot doesn't go up quite a lot, it actually comes down, right? But a 2,600-square-foot house is still going to be about a $450,000 home, right? It's expensive to build homes of that size. Now, whereas if we were to build studio condos or one-bedroom condos, those are actually going to be a little bit more expensive per square foot because a larger share of the overall unit is kitchens and bathrooms, but the total price comes down, right? So we can build condos for $225,000 to $250,000 if we're maximizing efficiency. Getting below those price points, and I'll talk more about this in a minute, requires a subsidy, right? As much as we want homeowners to be able to get into the market for $150,000 per below, there is no mechanism. I don't have a magic wand or like a really great way to design something that makes it so efficient to build that it only costs $150,000 to build, based on the cost of construction, unless you have a whole lot of volunteer labor and volunteer inspectors and volunteer general contractors and some in-kind donations of materials. It's really hard to get price points below $225,000 when we're building new construction. And that's okay, right? There are some incentives out there. There are some philanthropic subsidies. There are some state and federal subsidies. All those layers get complicated, but I want you to know they're available. And so if you tell me that the priorities is we want to make sure that we've got renters who can afford no more than $600 a month, we want to accommodate those folks, we can figure that out. Or homeowners who can pay no more than $900 a month, we can figure that out. It's just a little more complicated. So we're going to do just a little bit of math real quick to give you a sense of the subsidy. If construction costs range, right? So the other thing I should say is the $265 a square foot is average. You can be super basic in your level of finish and bring that down just a little bit. 250 is about as low as we're seeing. Or you can be a little fancier, right? You can do granite countertops. You can do walnut cabinets or whatever you want, and it gets more expensive. So it's not, it's not a hard $265 a square foot. It really depends on your level of finish and the size of the unit. So, but if we use these numbers, an 800-square-foot apartment is going to cost a minimum of $200,000 before land and utilities. And so after we factor in the cost of land and utilities and soft costs and some other things, it's really going to be a minimum of $225,000 for 800 square foot. Now, if we don't add any subsidies or any incentives to that, it has to rent for about $1,800 a month, right? And the simple math, and I don't think I included the, no, I did, okay. So the simple math to get to the $1,800 a month rent is normally when we do a development, roughly 80% is going to be financed with some kind of a loan, right? And the loan is interest-bearing. And in today's market, an interest-bearing loan is going to have roughly a 6.8% to 7% interest rate. And so if we take 80% of the value of $225,000 and multiply that by 6.8%, you get roughly a $1,200 principal and interest payment every month. And so before you pay for property management, or maintenance, or utilities, or any of that, just paying down the debt on construction is $1,200 a month. And so then when we add in property payments and taxes, and property management and administration and all of those things, we get to a monthly rent of about $1,800 a month. And so this is why we're not seeing the market, right? This is why the private market isn't showing up in droves to say, whoa, South Haven has housing. We should go build a bunch of housing, right? There are plenty of developers who would say, I wish I could serve that. Right? We know we've got all these middle-income households who want a place to live, and we know how to build places to live, but there's a big difference between what it costs to build and what people can actually live for. Now, similarly, if we build a 1,200-square-foot single-family house, our average cost is going to be about $365,000. And again, when we take a mortgage, roughly 90% mortgage, 6.8% interest, and then add the tax obligation to that, we get to a monthly payment of $2,600. Now, we'll talk in a few minutes about what are the subsidies that are available to offset those costs, but I just want to be super real about what does it cost to build housing today so that as we start to talk about what are our priorities, we are keeping in mind these costs and the subsidies that are going to be necessary to offset those costs. Okay. So if we were to say what we really want to do is serve households that are renters who spend no more than $600 a month, the typical subsidy per unit is going to be $160,000, right? And so, right, we just multiply that by the number of households we're going to try to serve, and that's the subsidy that we have to come up with. And we'll talk about where do those subsidies come from, and how easy are they to get, and all of this. Similarly, if the cost of a single-family home is $365,000 and we're trying Similarly, if the cost of a single-family home is $365,000, and we're trying to get to a $900 a month mortgage payment, and remember, we're talking mortgage plus taxes, the subsidy we need for that is $225,000, right? And unfortunately, there are far fewer subsidies available for for-sale homeownership than there are available for rental property. The federal government doesn't, doesn't have a tax credit program for for-sale product in the same way they do for rental product. So coming up with a subsidy for for-sale is a different conversation, right? We're going to figure that out more with local tax revenue and local philanthropy than we are with federal or state incentives. There are some state programs for down-paying assistance and those kinds of things, but offsetting the actual construction costs is a different conversation. So with all of that in mind, I want, I want you to also think about the number of households who are cost-burdened in the city of South Haven. So the pink means that they're, they're spending more than 30% of their gross income on housing, and the dark pink means they're spending closer to 50% of their gross income on housing. So you can see our renters tend to be more cost-burdened than homeowners, and you can imagine why, right? For the most part, when we buy a house, we have to get qualified, right? Our mortgage broker is going to say, hey, we're not going to give you a mortgage for a house you can't afford. If this house costs you more than 30% of your income, you don't get a mortgage. A majority of our homeowners who are cost-burdened are retired rooms. It's folks who are now on a fixed income, and a significant share of that fixed income is going towards mortgage payment. I'm just making sure I save a little thing about this stuff. Oh, so this is the breakdown of the housing supply, the types of housing that are available in South Haven. So among our owner-occupied housing, the vast majority is single-family, right? No surprise there. Among renter-occupied, about two-thirds is multifamily, and a little less than a third is single-family, and then you've got about 130 multiple-home units that are available for rent. So just want to give you a sense of that. And then on the right, the far right where it says vacant, the Census Bureau defines anything that isn't occupied year-round as vacant. So what we know that to mean is those are, that somebody's seasonal home, right? Or it's a short-term rental, and it's probably a bit of both. We also know that included in that is an RV park and some recreational housing, so there's a campground. So that's not all short-term rentals or seasonal homeowners, it's a mix of the three. Okay. So we're, I'm going to summarize here and get into some tools, and then we'll start kind of the conversation about that. So, oh, shoot, look at my number, it's terrible. Whoops. Sorry. So what I have started to talk about to make this relatively simple is, is we need three different solutions layered on top of each other. Here, we're calling them all one, one, and one percent. So we need to have a regulatory environment that allows the kind of housing that people need and can afford, right? And so there are some families for sure that are going to need three beds and two baths, right? There are families with kids who aren't going to do well in a one-bedroom condo, and I'm not going to propose that that's the solution forever. We build single-family homes pretty well, right? They're expensive, but we know how to do it, and we don't really need to change local regulations to do that. Building smaller single-family homes sometimes is more of a challenge. It used to be, I think my dad grew up in an 840-square-foot house that was built just after World War II, and he and his three siblings lived there with their parents, two bedrooms, one bath. And for them, it was fine, it was great, right? We have sort of a different standard today. We feel like, oh, gosh, that's way too small, we could never do. But it's just cultural, right? There are some families, we have some good friends who are refugees from the Congo. They're a 10-person household who shares a three-bedroom house, and the kids sleep with the parents intentionally, right? They have their own bedrooms, but they prefer to sleep with their parents. Again, it's cultural. I'm not advocating for overcrowding, but don't misread my message, but know that there are ways to build smaller homes, but we have to allow it and then sometimes encourage it. And we also have to be thinking about attached housing and multi-unit housing. All of that can be done well, and I think this community recognizes as well as any that design is important, right? We don't just want to build some tiki-tacky boxes and say, well, there's your housing, right? What we want to do is build buildings that have structural integrity and quality and that fit within the character of the city of South Haven. So second number one, right, which should be number two, is development incentives. And these are basically tax incentives. There are a number of incentives that the city has at its disposal to offset the overall operating costs of a development. So as we mentioned earlier, there's the debt obligation that has to be paid down to finance the cost of construction. That's a component of the cost of housing. The other component is your tax obligation, right? And that can be sometimes up to a third of the total amount that you pay for housing. And so when appropriate, I'm not advocating that we give away all of your tax revenue for 20 years, but when appropriate, when it serves a public purpose, there are a number of tools and frankly, a number of new tools available to reduce the tax obligation for residential housing. We'll talk about that. Third is impact capital. Now, you could call this philanthropy, you could call it government subsidy, but sometimes it's neither of those things. Sometimes it's a corporate partner who says, I need 30 employees and I need them yesterday. And I've tried everything that I can do to make investments to provide housing support for these folks, and we can't seem to do it because there's no units available. Creating a mechanism for those corporate partners to invest into that then results in housing is a third option that comes with the government subsidy or the philanthropy capital. Typically, we need to be thinking about all three of those things layered on top of regulatory flexibility and tax incentives. If we really want to get true about our affordability, all of those things are going to be involved. I think you guys have seen this slide before, but I'd like to share it because it hits an important point home. This is an example of the exact single property developed in two different ways. This is a much larger property than Overton, so take that with a grain of salt, right? It's a little bit different. But if we assume that this property is 18 acres, the upper version is the typical single-family subdivision. It creates 38 new homes with an average price of $425,000. Because of the way it's laid out, it's super unlikely we're going to get a house that's priced under $350,000. And so we're going to generate new taxable value of around $8 million as a result of that development, and we'll get about 16 new public school students in our local schools as a result. Now, the same exact property could be developed with 146 new homes in a combination of single-family homes, townhomes, and condos. Our average price in that version drops to $325,000. But that's not affordable, right? I'm not saying that, gosh, $325,000, we solved our problem. But what I am saying is we just reduced the average cost from $425,000 to $325,000. So it's becoming slightly better. Now, the next one, our lowest price in the neighborhood dropped to $225,000 because we're allowing some attached condominiums. Now, we're talking, right? It's still not affordable to a lot of our workforce, but if we then can start to layer in subsidies and tax incentives, now we're able to get that price point down to a point where a local elementary school teacher or a bus driver can start to afford housing in this neighborhood. Now, here's my favorite part. The top version produces $8 million in tax revenue. The bottom version, even though our average price point is lower because we have more units, it's producing $23 million in tax revenue. It's three times more valuable to the local unit of government to do the bottom version than the top version. New public school students is more than double the top version. And anybody from our public schools in South Haven tonight? Yeah. How are you funded? How do you pay for some people? Per pupil?
What type of course?
Yeah. So the more pupils we have in our schools, the better we can fund our schools, right? What I wouldn't say is we should throw a thousand new students into the schools tomorrow, and that's going to be a hard challenge to satisfy. But if we can go from 16 to 35, that's adding value to each classroom. So now, the bottom version has a little bit more infrastructure, which means it has a little bit more cost, but we're able to offset that in a number of ways. And we're going to talk about some tools to do that. So this is an example, this is a building that is under construction right now on Wealthy Street in the city of Grand Rapids. These are two side-by-side four-unit condominiums. There are two two-bedroom units and two studio units in each of these buildings. They look like single-family homes, but they function as four-unit buildings. And if you remember, kind of pre-World War II, it was pretty common that we would build fourplexes in the same neighborhood as single-family homes. This is in the Heritage Hill neighborhood, so if you're familiar, there's lots of three-unit buildings and seven-unit buildings and one-unit buildings. This is possible. These building types are a little more expensive than a traditional kind of big multifamily building, but at scale and at character with the surrounding neighborhood and the place it's in. So here you can see what our unit costs are. We can save up to $500 a month, maybe $550 a month in rent, just by saying, hey, if you don't need 800 square feet, let's not force you into square, 800 square feet. Not everybody wants to live in 400 square feet, right? And I totally acknowledge what we don't want to do is force decisions on individuals, and I'm not saying we're going to put families in 400 square feet. But my wife and I, when we first got married, our apartment was 425 square feet, and it worked really well for us for about two and a half years. And we were able to save enough money to be able to buy our first house because we lived in a smaller place. We didn't have kids, but we had a bedroom that was separate from the dining room, that was separate from the living room, and a little galley kitchen, but we weren't cooking Thanksgiving dinner in our house. So what I just want to reinforce is that even though zoning doesn't solve for affordability, it does lower or level the playing field, it lowers the bar in terms of what does it cost to build in our community? And so if we get really clear with how simple it is to build in the community, that means we have to bring less subsidy to the table to make housing affordable. It doesn't make housing affordable all by itself because it's expensive to build stuff, but I just want to be clear about that. So now, really quickly, we're going to talk about the incentives that are available, and we can take a deep dive into any of these if you want to talk more specifically. The big one right now is the Brownfield Taxation Finance Program. Up until July of '23, Brownfield Taxation Finance was, so basically what it does, did I include it? Yeah. So, can you all still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we assume that this is our base taxable value, this continues to be, continues to go into the general revenue fund. Now, Overton site isn't producing any taxable value, so we're at zero, right? Baseline is zero. As soon as you build something on the property, it creates value, right? And suddenly, that new value, if it's privately owned, becomes taxable. This orange is the new value that gets created as a result of development. All of that orange can be captured and used to reimburse the developer for eligible costs, okay? And then at the end of, it says 23 years because it's like a made-up scenario, you can go as long as 30 years to pay for eligible activities. So there are two really important elements to this, especially as it relates to Overton. The first is we know that there is cleanup that has to happen on the property, right? Know that there's environmental contamination, and that's got to be cleaned up. One of the primary ways that we pay for those cleanup activities is by saying we have a development that's going to create X amount of value, right? Let's say it's going to create $20 million in value, which means the new tax revenue is going to be somewhere around $600,000, $700,000 between local county and state tax revenue. That $600,000 to $700,000 can be captured to reimburse all of the costs that are necessary upfront to clean up the site, right? And so let's say it costs $1.5, $2 million to clean up the site, and that might mean that you've got to scrape all of the soil that's on top, put it in a dump truck and drive it away to a T2D facility because it can't stay on the site, there's too much contamination. I don't know that that's true, I'm not an environmental expert, so like, somebody else has to tell you what the real environmental response activity looks like. But those costs can be paid for as a result of the development, right? Now, what doesn't happen, you don't develop the site and then clean it up. You clean it up and then you develop the site, but the way you get the dollars to pay for it is by having the development in hand, right? The development in hand basically says, we're going to build $20 million of value on the site, it's going to create $600,000 in tax revenue, we're going to use that tax revenue for the first five years to pay for the cleanup. And then the state says, okay, we'll give you the money upfront to do the cleanup, you'll do all of that cleanup, and then the development can start. That's one way to do cleanup. The other one is to start applying for grants. Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy does have some grant dollars, so you might be able to fund some of the cleanup of that. It's probably going to be a combination of the two, right? So you probably have to be pursuing grants and finding a developer who says, I want to build something that adds a bunch of value, and will use the new taxable value to pay for the cleanup. Now, the other really important thing is as of July, we got legislation changed related to Brownfield Taxation Finance that now allows for that tax increment to be captured to pay for housing activities as well. It used to only pay for the cleanup of environmental contamination, blight remediation, in urban places, you could pay for parking decks and stormwater, and those kinds of things too. But brand-new, as of six, seven months ago, you can now pay for housing as an eligible activity. So again, if we get a $20 million development that creates hundreds of thousands of dollars of new tax revenue, that tax revenue can be captured and reimbursed to fund the cost of construction on the front end. Now, the way that happens, typically there's a bridge loan, we can get into all the details of that, and I'm happy to go in deep in the weeds with you guys. But for now, I just want to be clear that the TIF can pay for both cleanup and housing activities, which is a super important tool. Now, the downside, as I mentioned earlier, is you're basically giving up the revenue that would normally go into the general fund to pay for local services because you're prioritizing affordability and environmental freedom. So you have to know those tax dollars aren't going to come to you at the local government, they're going to go back to the developer to reimburse all of the costs. And if it's worth it, if there's enough of the public benefit, you can go ahead and do that. So under that Brownfield program, there are a portion of local taxes that can't be captured, and that's anything related to a debt village. So if the school has a debt obligation bond that they're paying for with a village, you can't capture that, right? Those taxes have to continue to pay down debt because the school has obligations. Same with the library, or if you've got like a road debt village bond, all that stuff cannot be captured. But your general villages can all be captured, and the big value here is you're also going to capture state taxes. So you're going to capture up to 24 mills from the state that otherwise would go to Lansing and then get dispersed to Detroit, or Alpena, or who knows where. You're able to capture all of those state taxes that otherwise you would never see. And so typically, what this results in is about $300 to $400 a month in savings for our renters or homeowners who wind up living out of the site, right? So it's not, it's not a million dollars to each resident. It's not, I mean, ultimately, that amounts to about $3,600 to $4,800 a year, which is not nothing, right? But it probably doesn't by itself solve for affordability. Now, remember, when we, when we transitioned from an 800-square-foot unit to a 400-square-foot unit, we were seeing savings around $500 a month. If we add into that another $300 to $400 a month, again, now we're starting to talk. Now, now we're layering a lot of things. So there are additional subsidies, and you all are familiar with the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, right? We went through that whole process with Habitat, didn't work out the way we hoped it would, right? That is an available tool. I have this giant clock here because these things take time, right? And so one of the questions that I'm going to ask you in a few minutes is how time-sensitive are you? And there is no right answer to that. I think the question is, do you want us to develop sooner or later? The Low-Income Housing Tax Credit process, as we know, is competitive. It can take anywhere from nine to 36 months, depending on how competitive the project is. But it's a great tool. It brings a lot of subsidy with it. And so what, what we're going to do in a minute is decide what's more important, affordability, we're moving quickly, homeownership versus for rent, right? We're going to talk about all of them. The other potential sources of funding, Federal Home Loan Bank funds for-sale housing. They don't have a lot of money, so it's a competitive pile of funds, you're going to be competing. We go to the Indianapolis base of the Federal Home Loan Bank, so we compete with Indiana, Illinois, Ohio, and Michigan. And there's usually $13 to $20 million available for those four states. So think about it, the number of other developers that are probably going to be competing for that money doesn't mean it's not worth going after. Just know that it's, it's a time-consuming process, they award once a year, but there are dollars available for homeownership. Michigan Community Development Fund, that's a new fund that Mishna has set up, supports both rental and for-sale products. His region, I think, got an application of $4 million, we're in a six-county region. And so this could be a project that you want to apply for those dollars for. And then the Community Revitalization Program Fund, this is through the MDC. I think we have talked to Nate Scranton, I'm not sure that this particular... I'm not sure that this particular property will qualify for those CRP dollars, but it's worth a conversation. They can provide either a low-interest loan or a grant. Typically, they prioritize mixed-use or residential projects in downtowns or commercial corridors. So this one might be a stretch for the Overton site, but I put it on the list because it's a super helpful source of capital. All right, so I think this is the problem.
Ryan?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question? Can you back up two slides?
Yeah.
It's better when Matt's up there, I can ask the question. This past summer, I called you. You probably don't remember.
I remember calling, reminding you what it was about.
And I asked about Overton and about how we lost out with the financing through Mishna. And then I asked, and you said to me, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but something like, that kind of lower-income housing is very hard to get, and for whatever reason we didn't get it, and that's one of the reasons Habitat pulled out. But I remember clearly you saying, I don't remember what you called it, but you said, if you would do a little higher-priced housing, and you called it, and I've been using the term ever since, workforce housing, the state quote, if I quote you, was, is flush with money for that. So which one, is that the Michigan Community Development, or is that something different?
So that was the Missing Middle Funds. Michigan Missing Middle was, is a great program. So they spent down all of the dollars that were allocated to Missing Middle in the last round, and there hasn't been a new allocation yet. It was wildly popular. Like, there were lots of projects across the state that could put it to use because instead of having to bring in a giant subsidy to offset all the... Like, we've seen now, you need a whole lot of subsidy for one unit, let alone 20 or 30 units, right? And what Missing Middle did is it said, we want to hit that middle-income workforce who's, in this community, we would be funding mostly households earning $45,000 to $75,000 a year. It's kind of the sweet spot for that program. The money available there worked really well. It was roughly $35,000 to $40,000 per unit. When you layer it with the other tools, it was perfect, right? Hit the sweet spot. The challenge is, those dollars haven't been replenished yet, so we have to hope that the legislature chooses to fund that program again. Mishna has prioritized it, they've asked for it. I think it's in the governor's budget, I didn't check to make sure. Now, the other thing that I'll say is, remember we were talking about the Brownfield Taxation Finance Program and how we can now fund housing as an eligible activity? And again, this gets into your priorities. So you can say, we love that idea or we hate it, it doesn't matter. But if you wanted to do mixed income on the property, if you have market rate but year-round housing, if you have market rate, year-round housing, and affordable housing, the taxable value from the market rate can be used to provide subsidy to the low-income and moderate-income housing on the same property, right? So then what you're doing, let's, I, we'll make up a number. There's 30 units on the property. If there's 30 units on the property and you say, we're going to make 15 market rate and 15 affordable, the value that they can get from the market rate doesn't need to subsidize those market rates because they'll sell all by themselves, right? So you take their value plus the value created from the affordable, and you use it all to make those affordable homes more affordable. That's another way to get at the problem. And obviously, the more market rate you have, the deeper subsidy you can provide for low income. But then you get into this paradox where you say, are we going to try to help a handful of people a lot? Or are we going to try to help a lot of people a little, right? And so you start kind of, it's this philosophical debate, right? To decide, are we going to try to help as many people as possible and give everybody a little subsidy? Or try to help some families a whole lot? And there's not a way to answer that.
To add a little depth and clarity, for the 9% light tech that Habitat applied for, Mishna did a conditional no-go for environmental. And the rejection supporting material for that specifically said, additional characterization beyond the 2015 BEA baseline environmental assessment. Data is necessary and a comprehensive conceptual site model is required. Further investigation should include soil, shallow and deep soil vapor and groundwater sample, et cetera. So if we're talking about timing, and if we're going for any tax credit, it's going to go before Mishna. I can't imagine they would change their mind unless we have this. And so it seems that trying to decide what we want there is the cart before the horse if Mishna's telling us that we need this data. And so how can we get that data before we apply? What funding mechanisms are available? Moreover, so there was legislation that was, that was passed in the Senate. Unfortunately stalled in the House along party lines, which was very disappointing because it's a nonpartisan issue, changing what Mishna would afford. So it was Senate Bill 293. And it incorporated into the definitions, middle income. And middle income would be in the workforce housing category, up to 120 area median income. So is that, I mean, it's not passed, but what is being done to make sure it gets passed in this term? So it doesn't have to be reintroduced because it seems it's exactly what we need.
Yeah, yeah, it is. All right, I'm not a registered lobbyist, and so I can't have a lot of influence on those kinds of things. We are having conversations about what the value of that would be with our legislators. But I can't actively lobby for those things. There are organizations that are lobbying for them. They're qualified by the FIBs, fours and c6s. And, you know, that ultimately winds up being a political calculation. I'm not qualified to tell you what the result would be. I see your question, yeah?
Yeah, not a question, I just want a quick comment on it, but I think I heard Mary say. I've seen two of it, I got a chance to visit, two projects. One in, one in Harvard, one in Calhoun Zoo. And what bothers me about this whole thing, and I respect what you do, we come to these workshops, we get this information from us, and we've been getting this for the last three, four years. My struggle with the city is, why don't we go off and do proper benchmarking? This, this is, these questions are being asked in live time. Before I answer the question, they're getting projects done. The one in Calhoun Zoo was 14 units, $4.5 million project. And it was started by a Western Michigan, former Western Michigan football player. So although all this stuff sounds so cumbersome, if somebody out there are answering the questions. So basically what I'm hearing, I think it might be more doable with maybe Miss on Overton. And also, to her point, Mary's point about the contamination, the young guy that had the project gun in Calhoun Zoo, said they came out, first of all, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority actually gave them a grant. The state of Michigan is actually giving grants out to cities that have these brownfield, this land, and giving them money to actually clean it up. They, they promoted the project, the city support, they give them money to clean up. Well, they went into all what Mary said we have on our property. They had it, they, that Overton had, they had it in Calhoun Zoo. So they went through this whole spiel and put vapor and all that stuff. And it turned out later that when they painted up, dug the soil, brought in new soil, and did testing afterwards, that they found out they wasted almost, and there was a couple of people went with me, they found out that they wasted almost $100,000 because they didn't eat that vapor, they didn't eat that attic protection, and ventilation under the soil, they didn't eat that. So I, I think, hearing stuff about contamination and what it's going to cost is about, sites are being cleaned up, Ben Harper had the same issue. Sites are being cleaned up, they're getting grant money to clean it up. Now, I think maybe we might have to reconsider what we put on the property. Might have to be maybe a mix. But like I said, they had a lot of state money thrown at them. And I got it on my phone if you want to know. I'm sure you know, as they worked with the redevelopment, they worked with Calhoun Zoo Housing Village, and they put in 14 units. Out of the 14 units, they had six, I think, that was, went towards affordable, affordable housing and weighs up 60% of their median income. And then they had, I think, about four that was at 80% of the... And so they had, they kind of played around with, you know, what they allowed to be on that property, but they got it done. And I'm just saying that we have to quit talking and, and, and go. Instead of having these workshops, they're good. But when, when I used to talk to Brian all the time, he used to push benchmark. We're going out and see who's doing it, we're benchmarking benchmark. Nobody, we brought two projects to Southeast. And we can't get this, the governing body to really go to these cities and really dig into and try to figure out how do they do it on a contamination site just like it. And matter of fact, in Calhoun Zoo, they have way less property, 14 units, way less property. Overton is a lot bigger.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, I think the next step from the environmental side is a do-care plan, right? And so, excuse me, Eagle refers to it as a do-care plan. It's basically all of the steps that need to be taken to clean up the site. There are two ways to pursue a do-care plan. You can either do it with a developer as your partner, or you can try to pursue a do-care plan on your own as the municipality. There isn't a right or wrong way, but you're, I think you're right. The important thing is that you start taking action now, right? Because we've, we've been talking about this site for a few years now. We can continue to talk about it for a few years, or we can start to take action one way or the other. Either bring in a development partner who wants to pursue the do-care plan with you, or pursue the do-care plan on your own. Frankly, it doesn't matter that much, except when you have a development partner, you have a better sense of what's being proposed and how much new taxable value is being created. So you know how much tax increment you're going to have to be able to pay for costs that you don't get a grant for. But I would recommend that you're simultaneously pursuing grant dollars for cleanup. And you're absolutely right, there are plenty of funds out there available to help offset some of those environmental cleanup costs, but you have to start the work to pursue those funds. So I'm almost done, and then I want to make sure that you all have a chance to weigh in on some of the questions and that we have a dialogue with the council. So this is a really quick, kind of simple, bare-bones, rule-of-thin, kind of a standard metric. So if we're trying to serve households earning $25,000 a year or less, that means that they can afford about $600 a month. It's very, very, very difficult to get them into homeownership at that income level. And so unfortunately, I have to assume that we're probably going to have households earning $25,000 a year or less in a rental product, because it's just more financially sustainable. We would essentially subsidize everything at $600. So we know we need a large subsidy for households that can afford $600 a month. Flexible zoning helps, right? But it's, it's not going to make a ton of difference when, when their ability to pay rent is that. Now, a family or household earning $50,000 a year can afford monthly rent or mortgage of $1,250 a month. If it's a rental product, we only need a moderate subsidy to hit that price point. And we need flexible zoning, right? We can't say, okay, you've got to build a giant thing and it's going to be really expensive and expect to be able to make that affordable. But if we're being, if we're being very simple and streamlined with our regulatory environment, the subsidy required for that price point isn't extraordinary, but it is necessary. Some subsidies necessary. Now, for households earning $75,000 a year, they can afford roughly $1,875 a month. What they can afford at most in today's interest market is $225,000 a mortgage, right? So again, we said earlier, average cost for a new single family is around $360,000. We're not going to get them into a sixty, a single-family home without a lot of subsidy. But there might be other rental property, other for-sale products, attached townhouses, multi-unit condos, those kinds of things, that need quite a bit less subsidy. But you have to allow for that from a zoning perspective. Households earning $100,000 a year are more vulnerable, right? In this market, we can still figure out how to do that without subsidy. Preferably, we're still being flexible about the regulatory environment, because even at $2,500 a month, like, you're just squeaking under the threshold of the median house price. And for new construction, it's typically even harder. So these are the various ways that development gets paid for, the kind of the cost buckets. Typically, 10% to 25% of your, your development cost of the land. The city has the land, right? So you have the ability to probably shave at least 10% to 15% of the overall development cost off if you want to forego a sales price on your land, if you want to donate. You don't have to do that, just know it's a tool. Construction, the way we influence construction is by square footage. It's by like maybe not requiring two parking spaces per unit, parking is expensive. It's by allowing for maybe a reduced utility connection, right? All of those things reduce your construction costs. Design, the way to reduce those costs is to be super clear on the front end about what you want. Don't make them go through nine iterations of a site plan and 45 different architectural renders. Tell them what you want and say, if you build this, we'll give you a permit quickly. But make sure that what you want is within reason from a cost perspective, or that you've got enough subsidy to offset. Permanent professional fees, again, this is really about how quickly they get through the process, right? If the, if the developer has to go through multiple iterations of site plans, and they have to do lots of engineering and then redo their engineering, that gets expensive, and I promise, the developer won't eat those costs. They're not going to say, oh, shucks, I spent $250,000 I'll never get back. They're going to add those costs to the cost of the homes or the rental units. That's just the way development works. Even if it's a nonprofit, they have to do that. They can't afford to lose $250,000 every time they do a development. And then lastly is financing. This is where your incentives come in. If you're able to offset some of the costs that they would otherwise have to give a loan for, right? If normally they would get a loan for 80% of the project and then they bring 20% in as equity, if you're able to say, actually, we'll use Brownfield TIF and it'll offset 15%, 20% of your overall costs, that reduces what they have to finance in the marketplace. And so it reduces the overall cost of, of construction. So with that, I'm going to do a quick pivot.
Can I just ask you a question about the last thing you said? Because there was a similar thing with a previous slide. So when you say it could reduce the cost for the developer, and then I think in the slide that said there was potential savings of $400 or $600 a month, how do you ensure that that gets passed on to the person in the housing?
Great question, yeah. So there, there's really one mechanism to do it. And it's, we require the developer to income-certify every resident that is required to be income-certified. So essentially what that means is, you're going to, to require the developer through a development agreement that for every unit they promise is going to be affordable, they're going to do an income check when that resident moves in. And they're going to use their W2s and their most recent pay stubs to provide evidence that they're not earning too much money to live in that unit. Every time a resident moves out and a new one moves in, you can have a deed restriction on the property that says, you've got to income-certify every new resident who moves in. You can do it for both for rent and for sale product. Now, the beauty of the Taxation Finance Program is, the city decides every year whether to release those, that tax revenue back to the developer. So the city collects taxes as future. And so those taxes, you're going to issue a tax bill, it's going to go to the developer, they're going to pay you their taxes. And then the city has to essentially cut them a check to give them their tax dollars back according to the Brownfield plan. What you're going to do is say, you have to first submit all of your income certifications and demonstrate that all of the tenants who said we're going to be income-qualified are actually income-qualified. And you're going to provide a third-party report that verifies that they've done that. Once they submit that report, then the city can say, okay, we're going to release the tax revenue back to the developer and that's going to pay down a portion of their debt on the construction. So you have a mechanism every single year for as long as you want, for as long as you're providing tax increment, to ensure that they're maintaining affordability on those roads.
As long as it's in the Brownfield plan?
Yes, exactly. So, yeah, so the Brownfield plan would go 25 or 30 years maybe. But if you said we wanted 50 years of affordability, you need another mechanism. It's much harder to essentially ensure that you're getting perpetual affordability. Uh, it's much harder to, to essentially ensure that you're getting perpetual affordability unless it's a dedicated portion of somebody's job, right? So you would have to say, somebody on our staff at the city is going to go make sure that they're still income certifying all of their tenants, year after year after year, but you're not gonna have as much teeth if you don't have that incentive to pass on. So, and I, I think that this is a fair point. Um, assuming that the housing is gonna be affordable forever, unless you have some agency with teeth that can, that can pull back the incentive, it's super hard. So the other mechanism to do it is to have a nonprofit owner.
The community land trust.
Yeah, the community land trust, absolutely. Or, or like Habitat for Humanity does this with a deed restriction, but Habitat for Humanity is following up on those deed restrictions every year. You gotta make sure that you've got that administrative component, otherwise who knows, right? And so it's not impossible, right? You just have to have the infrastructure in place to know that when you all have retired and you're enjoying, um, whatever you're doing twenty-five years from now, somebody is still on the job monitoring affordability. Or you accept that you've done something really good for fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and at the end of that period, it can become marketable, right? Cause that's what will happen. I, I see a bunch of questions. I think what we're gonna do is get through the, the survey and then answer those questions, if you're okay with that. I wanna make sure that the council has the ability to, to respond. Also, I'm gonna trust everybody in the audience. First, I'm gonna count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have seven council members. For the first version of the survey, we're just gonna have the council members respond. This is not a decision, right? I'm not asking that, um, this is a vote. What I'm trying to do is get a sense of like, what direction are you leaning? Because the questions I'm about to ask are gonna inform if the staff decides that they're gonna prepare an RFP for the Overton site. And that's not to say that you all must do that and process that. We're just trying to get a sense of, are you leaning towards more affordability, like deep low income, middle income, workforce, right? How are you leaning in that direction? How quickly do you wanna move? Do you prefer rental or homeownership or a mix of both? Those are the questions that are gonna be on this. So if you've processed the QR code, can we switch over to my laptop? Yes, if you unlock your laptop.
People have laptops.
Yay. And then when I queue in, I just tap in the arrow.
Yeah. Or I can, I can just plug it into your laptop if you wanna keep your little thing.
Oh, yeah. Sweet. So I, I think we established at the outset, we're, for this conversation, we're still just talking about the Overton site. I know that we do also wanna have a conversation just about housing in general, which is totally fine. Um, I've been asked to facilitate a survey specific to the Overton site. So I think we have all of our answers in so far. Um, so we're seeing them in this, right? We're seeing them in real time. Oh, it's a US.
I can do it if you have a little thing. Or I can just hit.
Yeah, let's just do that, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Thanks, Joe. Okay. Now, we're talking about price points, helping understand which price points you feel like are gonna be the one to.
Brian?
Yes?
Can I ask you a question while you're doing this?
Um.
Where would you rather wait?
I can wait. I, I wanna answer questions and I wanna make sure we go through this.
Hey, Brian, so I did the first one, the, but I can't, I left the site.
Oh.
So the next question needs to come up.
Oh, you can't go back?
No, I can't.
Shoot. Okay.
Can you put the QR code back up?
I gotta put it here.
I don't know why it's done, I'm just going the first one, I never went beyond the first one. And I get this wrong.
Oh, you just have to leave this thing.
So we're gonna buy each one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. For each one. And then that, it should still register for you, Joe, so that when we're done, we'll look at the summary. So that you guys, I don't just like to fill you in, they have these little sliders on your phones and they're, they're sliding back and forth to the slide. How important is the low income versus middle income?
Brian, is that getting just council members or is that getting the entire audience?
It should be getting just council members, so they can do, they, they get multiple answers. So like theoretically, they could say, they could put a five for each one of the categories. Let me know when you're all done on this.
Kind of lower, right? You can smell it.
The presenter has to change slides.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's go to the next one, right? Okay. So this question is about, do we want all of the housing on the Overton site to be affordable? Or do you wanna mix the market rate and affordable? And so if you want all of the units to be affordable, you're gonna mark a hundred percent. If you think seventy-five percent of the units should be affordable, you're gonna mark seventy-five percent. And so.
So what did we have last time that we lost that was affordable? It was too low.
With your last, um, development plan?
When Habitat left, we were trying to get what you called, or what we call affordable, that was the real low price.
Yes.
There wasn't money for that. So then you said you go to workforce, which one of those is workforce?
Okay. Good question, Joe. So remember, when I say affordable, I mean it's not market rate, right? It's affordable to the people who live there. I'm not saying that it's low-income housing tax credit or that it's government subsidy or something.
That's very similar.
But it's just that the people who live there are guaranteed to have an affordable loan. And so what I'm saying is, in this scenario, if you marked a hundred percent, we would, we would guarantee that a hundred percent of the units were income restricted. It doesn't necessarily mean that they would be earning thirty percent of the median income or fifty percent of the median income. You'll decide that in another, in another question. This question is, do you want any of the units to be market rate, or do you want them all to be income restricted, or some version in between? Does that make sense?
So. I had hit submit and I'm out, so I, these never came up.
Well, you hit submit? Okay. Uh, do you want the QR code again? You wanna start over?
It still comes up when I hit submit. Now mine just might be.
Okay.
Okay, now it is started.
Okay, good. I promise this won't take very long. Thanks, everybody.
See, I'm very, the, the question about a hundred percent affordable, seventy-five percent affordable, so this is. It's not very measurable. So, I mean, a hundred percent affordable, you could be up in a hundred and twenty percent AMI with someone making sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Technically, yes, but in, in another question, you're gonna, well, actually, you already told me, what's your priority? How low incomes are really prioritized? In a previous question, you told me. So we'll cross-tabulate it too, right? This one is basically, are you interested in a mix of market rate and affordable or not a mix? Do you want it all to be income restricted or? And remember, when we talked about using the Brownfield TIP program, if you decided you wanted to use a mix, the market rate units help to pay for some of the affordable units and provide a deeper subsidy. And so this question helps me to understand, how comfortable are you with allowing some market rate in development? I probably should have phrased it in reverse, right? Maybe I should have said, do, would you prefer some share of market rate housing? And if so, how much? Right? Sorry about that.
Is that for yourself, something?
Yeah, we're still, we're still waiting on two people. Just one more. Okay, great. Let's go to the next one. All right, so now we're gonna adjust the scales to reflect your support for each statement related to the Overton site. Now, these are just my made-up statements, so if you don't like any of them, don't vote for any, say you strongly disagree with all. Can you guys all read these questions in the back?
No.
Okay, I'm just gonna read them so you know what they're answering. So the top statement, and the options are strongly disagree, up to strongly agree, and so they'll respond somewhere in the middle. The first statement is, density is arbitrary. I'm concerned about good design, right? And the council members can strongly disagree, strongly agree, or say maybe a little bit of depends, right? The second question is, new housing should be primarily single-family homes on individual lots. Strongly disagree, strongly agree, or somewhere in between. The third question is, a variety of housing types and price points is most valid as long as they are not out of scale for the neighborhood. Strongly disagree, strongly agree, somewhere in between. And then the last one is, we need new options in South East, even if they look a little different from what already exists. I mean, strongly disagree, or strongly agree, or somewhere in between. So we've got four responses so far. Six, thanks. One more. All right, looks like, does anybody think they're done? I think we're gonna see some of his response. Okay, we're gonna move on, just for the sake of time. I think this is the last one. Oh, great, thank you. Okay. Please rank in order of importance pertaining to the Overton site. With, if, if you were gonna pick a top priority, is your top priority timing? Is it getting the affordability balance right? Is it ensuring that we get the right types of housing, meaning owner-occupied versus renter-occupied? Or is it getting the density right? Do we, do we wanna make sure that we get the right number of units for the site? And then you're gonna do that for each one. What's your second priority? What's your third priority? And remember, this is not a vote, it's not official, you're still gonna have a ton of time to react to proposals and all kinds of things. It just gives us a sense, if staff is gonna write an RFP, it gives them a sense of what should be communicated to potential development partners.
There's no way to go back. I only hit one, sorry.
Oh, can you hit the back button? Sorry.
Reload it and give it back to you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna wait just cause I put everybody on hold, but we're almost done. Oh, we got all seven? Okay. So.
Hit it on?
Yeah. Let's see what happens. I think I might have to go to see results. Yeah, do you see a see results button on there?
It, it's on the upper screen anyway.
Oh. Okay, I think we can be done with that.
I'm gonna get it, I can get it, it's all this thing up all year.
Nah, we'll, we'll do that as a follow-up. So I, I recognize that maybe my question, someone could have been phrased a little bit of that, so thanks for the honest feedback, we'll get that over. What I'm gonna do with staff as a follow-up is essentially compile that into a very, very brief report that says, here's how we answer it, these are the kind of priorities that they communicated in that particular survey. We'll give that back to you in the next day or two, so that you can kinda see what those choice rankings look like. And that will then help to inform, what's the next step, right? Do you wanna have more dialogue about those things? Do you have more questions? Is there a particular order of operations, right? So nothing we just did decided anything, but it helps to inform what are the next steps that we wanna take with staff to better inform your decisions going forward. So with that, first I'm gonna ask the council, do you have questions that you wanna explore relative to the presentation, or anything about the survey that they just took?
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no.
Okay. Um, I think in the last presentation, you talked about the, the number of housing units that were short here.
Yeah.
Do you still have that?
I do. If I said that number, I would make it up. So, um, but I can get it to you, when we give you the results, I'll also give you the number of units that we know we need.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just one, COSHES, our South East and Area Emergency Services, they're actually both EMT and firefighter. So they make more than an EMT or a firefighter, so, for our local area, at least in 2021, when I looked at the information, it was forty-two thousand eight eighty-nine people. Um, so if you're looking for workforce incomes, do you wanna update that? With the numbers that you had, that was it, with the number of people in one, one or two-person households, um, with children, the numbers that you provided, are those the number of individuals or are those households? Because if it's for the city, we have under four thousand people, the total, my quick, if my math was right, was over twenty-four thousand. What were those numbers? What's the basis of those numbers?
Those should be individuals and, well, actually, great point, Mary. Let me double check.
Cause it might be the township and the city.
I think that we compiled those numbers when we did the township plus the city plan, yeah? So if you wanted me to, I can follow up and pull out just the city numbers.
That would be helpful, so that we understand what we're looking at. And it would be very interesting to see how it differs for the city versus the township if we're looking only at Overton, but I do believe that that's a little, I would like to be more broad.
Yeah, absolutely. And I do think, if I recall correctly, there were more families with kids in the township than there were in the city.
And that's because we've had a lot of people moving out of the city, which is where we're kind of at, and we're trying to bring them back. So how can we do that?
Sure.
And I know from Habitat's application to MISTAA, they also rejected the lower parking ratio. They said that because our walkability score was so high, which is not good. Um, a high walkability score is a bad thing.
Okay.
Versus a low, um, they said that it couldn't be lower than one-point-five cars per dwelling unit. Because we don't have, we, the two main grocery stores, the larger ones, are both right by Phoenix and One-Ninety-Sixth. And Overton is a significant distance from there, and I just know people who have to rely on the, the Starland, that it can be cumbersome, and if you have groceries, that's complicated when there's refrigeration issues. So we have to look at bringing people here, we need to make sure that they can eat, they have the tools to get to where they need to go for the grocery shopping.
Yeah. So I've learned something over the last two years, and that is, MISTAA will always defer to their standard regulation and their first review. And if the city is supportive and you can provide justification, they'll reduce their parking requirement, because their standard is one-point-five. Now, it totally depends on the type of unit that is being provided. So if it's a one-bedroom unit, right, probably one parking space is gonna be okay.
Possibly, if they're driving thirty miles though and you have two people, so that's...
Yeah, right. So not to say that I think there is a clean rule of thumb for every unit, I think what I wanna make sure I imparted today is, every parking space you add, adds cost.
Exactly.
And reduces the amount of land area available for housing. And as long as everybody's clear, yeah, we're making a trade-off to have more parking for less housing, that's entirely, that's the whole point of your role, is to decide what's the right thing for that city.
Great, but we also have to take into consideration that we cannot have on-street parking near ground because we have no parking overnight from November to March. So overflow onto the street is not an option. What I really like in our zoning ordinance is that if you have less parking, that's what we require. what required justifiably, you have open space that can be converted to parking if your exponents are off. So if we do go to a lesser ratio, which I'm not per se against, I want to make sure that we've got a fallback position.
Got it.
To cover that if our heavily vehicle-dependent community continues to be that way.
Yeah. And I would also say, and Kate might kick me later for saying this, I'm a public works fellow. You guys get to set policy as to who gets to park on the street, when, and how often. Right? So technically, we could change that, but if you don't want to, that's also okay.
It's for safety purposes and for plowing and things like that. And I know this past year, we hardly got anything. But in previous years, it's been bad.
Yeah. And there are lots of communities that get snow and a lot of parking on the street. It's not to say it's the right or wrong way, it's just a policy trust. I would just, we don't have any plan at all. And you just were saying that parking is a trade-off of the cost. And then, so, I don't wanna, wanna get the public a chance to talk? Yeah, 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 okay. Okay.
First, thanks for being here. So I know this is not just a South Haven issue, it's statewide. The state is, last year came up with a state housing plan, and that also, part of that state housing plan is regional housing plans. And I'm not sure, is there any possibility that the state or the regional housing plan for this region might somehow be able to be used to leverage money for Overton?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. So there's not an unlimited amount of money available, right? I think they set aside seventy-five million dollars for the state housing plan. And I'll have to double-check. I think that your region got an allocation of four or five million dollars that's spread across six counties. So, you know, if they were to give pro-rata per county, there's a little less than a million dollars available for Banbury and Kennedy. It doesn't mean that that's all that's available to you. It's really gonna be first come, first served. Right? So this particular year, the amount that's budgeted, I would say you could probably pursue around a million, maybe a million five, if there aren't a lot of other projects that are competing for funds in this calendar year. Now, I think the governor's priority is to continue to invest in that, based on her State of the State address. There will be continued funding in that, as long as the legislature supports it. So even if you don't get a project this year, you'll probably have funding again next year. But note that it's kind of first come, first served. So the sooner you have a project that you can attach to the site, to say, this is what our costs are gonna be, and here's how much gap we're trying to fill, the more likely it is that there will be dollars.
Hey, Brian, we had a question in the back. If you can repeat some of what the council says, so we can, they can hear it in the back, that would be helpful.
Yes. So my answer just now was to a question about the statewide housing plan, and the fact that there are regional sub-plans that are being funded through the state, and how much of those dollars are likely to be available to the cities out there. All right. Council, I have questions in the back. Any other council members have a question they want me to address before we address the poll?
I just have one. Do you have any advice for how these local governments, like taking your presentations, how we can move to the next step to act on those?
Yes. So I think it's important that, to the best you can, be unified about what you want, right? And you're setting individually, you're setting individually. But coming to some agreement around, a success would look like this, right? And so we know that the property's gonna be cleaned up before development occurs there, and that that's success, right? So clean up the site. Next, it's gonna be some of these survey questions. Are we gonna prioritize rental or homeownership? Are we gonna prioritize affordability versus middle, like deep-low income versus middle income versus kind of upper end of the income spectrum? Getting clarity about those things, so that staff can start to pursue the next channel for development, while we simultaneously pursue funding for site cleanup. Those are gonna be the really important next elements. But I think we've learned together, over the last three or four years, that we've gotta start taking action towards a particular plan. And the plan that we're taking action towards needs to be as financially viable as possible. Right? And so if what you choose as a group is that you want as much affordability as possible and as deep-low income as possible, I would suggest that with staff, we start to pursue every possible funding source available, because it's gonna take us some time to pull all of those spots together. If you say, hey, you know what, if we can get some middle-income stuff and some market-rate stuff, that's way easier to get done in a short period of time, but it doesn't solve for the same kinds of problems or the same number of things. Okay? And so, like, this is the hard part, is since we're not gonna solve for all of your challenges on one site, we're gonna have to pick, do we wanna move fast and support as many people as we can with at least a bonus subsidy? Or do we wanna be slow and deliberate and be as deep-low income and affordable as possible? So getting clarity on that is the first best next step, so that we can start pursuing contamination cleanup funds and development partners to do what you say is important for the state.
What is the best zoning change that you're seeing in cities?
Normally, what I would say is get rid of the minimum lot with requirements and lottery limits. They don't really mean a whole lot. That's different for the Overton site, right? Based on the PV that's been approved in the past, you didn't have that constraint. I think the planning commission was pretty flexible, and you all were pretty flexible. What I've seen approved in the past for the Overton site was pretty darn good, right? I don't think you're gonna get a significantly better plan through zoning reform on Overton. I think zoning reform comes in on an incremental scale across the rest of the city. Right? If we start to say, all right, you know what, maybe most homeowners could put an accessory dwelling in their backyard. That's an incremental step we could take. Or properties on certain corridors could have a second unit by right, either inside the existing structure or in the backyard, right? Those are good opportunities. And, and I haven't done like a GIs survey, so take that, this with a grain of salt, but oftentimes, what we'll find in communities is homes that are sitting on double lots. But it's not quite illegal double lot, right? And so if you tried to split it in half, that you would be creating a non-conforming lot, even though it feels like there's a vacant lot that should be developable there. Just like starting to clean up the cobwebs in the zoning ordinance to make it really easy, when somebody's got thirty-five feet of frontage next to their house, and they're like, I'd love to sell this and put a small house on it, but I can't because zoning prevents it. Make it easy to do those kinds of things. And again, the new houses that get built are gonna be kind of expensive. But there are tools available to offset those costs, and you can use those tools to make sure that the housing becomes year-round housing. You can say, we'll provide this tool, but only if you're ensuring that this is year-round housing, not some shit.
Just towards that, I just know that lot coverage and drainage are huge issues, known issues, and it appears infrastructure issues. So what I would like to see is some movement towards allowing ADUs, but to the extent it doesn't affect lot coverage drainage issues and is not CRs, but does allow for our seasonal and long-term renters. And the zoning ordinance, I would like to see duplexes, quadruplexes, like you show. They fit right in. You would not even know that they're there, that there's more than one dwelling unit. And those are something easy, we just need, as an entity, to direct the planning commission to do that. Because I know in the recodification, ADs are still not inhabitable.
Do you guys have Sandy Swirls or Class Swirls?
Yes.
Both. Okay, so then you're pointing out making sure that it's one of ours privately, which wealthy.
Yes. There are several issues, known issues. So that, so although they may have a lot, I just, I am very concerned about ninety percent imperious coverage on a lot. It just causes problems to the neighbors, and that's not right.
Joe, did you have another follow-up?
Yeah, it's more of a con, it's not a question. I think for a lot of the residents I've talked to, and for myself, and I can definitely speak for myself, when we lost the other development in Overton, it's been a long time. And it feels to me like we've talked about all these issues, all the options, where we, what does the council want, which is supposed to be a reflection of what the residents want? I'm just very frustrated that we don't have a plan of action. And I don't know if I'm qualified to sit here and vote on a plan of action. I can tell you what I want, like Mary just said, duplexes, triplexes, maybe even AUDs in certain areas.
ADUs.
Pardon me?
ADUs.
AD, sorry. But I don't know, I don't know how to create a plan of action. And you give us all this information, but we still, it doesn't feel like we're leaving here, if we leave now, that we're any closer because we need to start funneling down to an actionable plan.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Can I repeat what you just said? I'm sorry, I haven't been doing this for a while, I forgot about it. So Joe just said he feels like, leaving here today with what we've done so far, doesn't feel like an action plan, right? It just feels like we're spinning our wheels a little bit? Is that fair characterization?
Yeah, okay.
So...
Not intentional.
No, no, I think that's very fair. So the intent here is, we've essentially taken your opinion, your kind of rough opinion in the survey. We're gonna use that to give you a plan of action. That you will then say, your plan is terrible, you should go rewrite it. Or you'll say, this is pretty close, we might need to kind of tweak it or modify it, but we think we're heading in the right direction. So what I didn't wanna do is today, in a workshop setting, put you in a position where we're asking you to make a plan outside of a sort of normal council process. What I wanted to do was give you the background information, start to pull your opinions out around a handful of issues, so that that can inform us staff, and where we can draft something for you and come right back and say, here's what we think we heard, these are the next best steps that we would recommend for you. And then you can say, I don't like those recommendations, or you can say, okay, great, let's take those steps.
And a follow-up part to that question, and this is not a criticism of anyone, but I don't think our staff are that knowledgeable, per se, on housing. You are. So who would help the staff to come to us with options of plans of action?
Yeah, well, I think your staff is pretty darn knowledgeable.
They are.
I get to work with that quite a bit. And I'm not unavailable, so if you decided that you wanted me to continue to work with staff, I'm happy to do that. Feel pretty confident in Griffin and Kate's ability to put together something that is highly actionable. And like I said, I'm more than happy to help support to the degree that is necessary. Or I could recommend other consultants, too. You guys aren't stuck with me, I promise. Let me ask you all a question, and this is a question for Kate. We have some burning questions in the back. How much time do we wanna spend on Q and A with the audience? I wanna like set good expectations for how long.
Well, if we can keep the comments for about two minutes, we'll try and get to everybody.
Okay. And just based on process, do we want people to come up to the mic?
It'd be best if they came up to the microphone.
Okay. Council, do you have more questions before we take public comment or other questions?
George, did you get your question answered?
I'm gonna wait, if there's time afterwards, I can answer.
Okay. Can I ask the audience, do you want me to stay up here, or do you just wanna make a statement?
No, I, it's for you.
Okay. Kate, do we need to say name and address?
No.
Okay.
All right.
Help with the phone.
My name's Nina. We know who I am. This is an idea that you may be able to help facilitate. Do cities, take for instance, Overton, they wanna get rid of that lot. Could they form their own land trust? Go to a place like Dwelling Place in Grand Rapids, and we'd save the money on the property cost, the ten to whatever that percentage was. And we could make a community, a real community development. And is that possible to do? How hard is that to do? And would it be a cost-saving way to get this going and try and problem-solve and get this all going, going, going?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the quick answer to that is yes. And I think Dwelling Place would be interested in that if that was the direction that the city wanted to take.
They wanna get rid of it. I mean, the property, you guys wanna get rid of the property?
I'm gonna be at the microphone.
I'm assuming that you guys wanna get rid of the property and make, and develop it. So has that been any conversation within the city to do a land trust for that property?
I'll be at the microphone first.
So the city has talked with Dwelling Place, that was part of the original plan with Overton, with the Habitat company. And it's easier to work with an established land trust, which the Dwelling Place has over forty years' experience, rather than trying to start your own. So there's two ways of doing it. You could start your own, but there's a lot of upfront costs, as well as getting everything sorted out. Or you can work with an established land trust, such as Dwelling Place, that is interested in coming down into this area.
So the costs, though, I'm talking about the sale of the property, would the city be willing to give the property?
Well, that's not my choice, that's up to the city. But that's, I think there's, that should be, that's a consideration that's on the table, depending on how much of the affordability you're gonna pass on.
Okay, thank you.
I shouldn't really even be at the microphone, because this is so short, but when you're determining what's affordable for people, like the mortgage and stuff like that, are utilities, the South Haven utilities included in that?
Yeah.
And like, is that electric, sewer, water, all those?
Generally, yeah, it would include all that.
And what about taxes?
Yes. Yeah, so we tend not to include taxes in rental product, but yes, in forceful product.
Thank you.
One quick comment. I wanna reiterate the fact that I went back and listened to the discussion that I had in Calmazoo, and did some research on the project and Benton Highway. This is why it's so important that we think about creating an ad hoc committee that will focus on trying to help this council and the staff, because both those projects get off the ground, because they took advantage of the missing middle initiative. It's almost impossible to do what we're talking about tonight without that missing middle fund. It's almost impossible. So we have to think outside the box, get somebody, put together some bright minds. There's a lot of bright-minded people in the community that's willing to help us. Those seven won't be able to do it and still keep on track with all the other issues in the city. They need to think about seriously putting together an ad hoc committee that will focus on these fundings that's out there, so we don't miss it. The governor came as close as twenty minutes away to lay out her budget plan and her initiative to support these type of issues. We should've had somebody down there. If you have an ad hoc committee, they will focus, they will help the city. We have a lot of bright-minded people that's willing to help us. So I just wanted to say that, and I think you know that, it's going to be almost impossible unless they, unless the governor refund that initiative again. If not, we have to think outside the box and come up with creative ways to do it, like giving the land away to some developer, that kind of stuff. To try to pick whatever subsidies, you know, maybe in housing millage, we have to think outside the box if we, because we missed out on that missing middle millage. It might have to be a mixed-unit place on Overton, and I saw where in Calmazoo, they were...
Two minutes, okay.
I think we're gonna have to get some help.
Yeah. Thank you to whoever's talking.
Ryan, it's great to see you again. Third time here, great, you always bring great knowledge, helps the staff out. But here's my question to you.
Okay.
Overton's gonna take some time, as we clearly know. In the meantime, what have you seen that the average time length to get zoning changed In the meantime, what have you seen as the average time length to get zoning changed in a city municipality for adding ADUs or apartments above garages that would give us a quick step to get workforce housing in the meantime? And how do we get that going so we're not going another year or two years and seeing you two more years?
It totally depends. So the question is, what's the average time to get zoning changes? It really depends on the support of the community. I was really encouraged, the city of Frankfurt up in Benzey County just passed a whole slew of zoning changes. And they had fifty residents who showed up and said, we really want these changes to occur. And I think there were four residents who were opposed. And so having, having folks from the community who say, we want this, is really important for the council to be able to make decisions that sometimes are hard. And if you don't have a lot of support from the community, council is gonna deliberate longer, right? Because they're hearing from just as many constituents who are opposed as they're hearing from constituents who are in favor. And so if there are folks who are really supportive of those kinds of changes, organizing some neighbors to say, hey, we think this is really important. We need to talk to our elected officials to tell them how important it is. The last thing I'll say about that is generally, and council will correct me if I'm wrong, generally they hear from people who are opposed to something seven times more often than they hear from people who are in favor of something. And so if the only comments that they're getting, or the vast majority of the comments that they're hearing are from people who are opposed, they're far more inclined to believe that a majority of folks are opposed. It's just that when somebody sees council is doing something they like, they don't show up to say, good job, right? They say, okay, good, they're doing what I want them to do, I don't need to go harass them. So for anybody who is in favor of some modest incremental changes to the zoning ordinance, I would recommend that you organize some neighbors to communicate to council that you're in favor, because otherwise their job gets super hard.
So that could be something that could actually be done before summer season?
I mean, potentially.
Well, one, one thing we gotta keep in mind is though, if anything that we want to do conflicts with the master plan, we can't do it. We have to get the master plan changed first, which is on the, you know, on the plan for this year. But that is gonna, that would add time depending on, you know, I could look at the specifics of what the master plan says, but I remember discussions, last time we did the master plan, there were people that were specifically against like duplexes in R1A District. And I don't think the master plan would allow that, even though that is something that is beneficial.
So a couple of people have said, we need to think outside the box. Couple of random outside the box thoughts. Grand Rapids, where my husband and I both grew up, allows you to park on the street all year round, odd-even parking. It's a little convoluted to get used to. It's before or after midnight, you have to move your car, blah, blah, blah. But the plows happen, the streets get cleared. That's one random easy to fix. Regarding one and a half parking spaces and maybe people can't get to the grocery store, fifty-five and older communities often have a dedicated vehicle that goes to the grocery store two or three times a week for the resident, with the residence on it. Similar to our, I don't know what we call it, you're the go-bus, the star bus? But it would be dedicated to that community. Parked there, they all know that Tuesday at ten o'clock, they can go to the grocery store. Another outside the box idea. An ad hoc committee because there are people who are passionate in this community in different modes of things we want to change. And the council has so much on their plate as it is, let us help you. I went with Bishop Wilkins to Calmazoo, met the young man who made it happen on a tiny one and a half acre, I think, plot of land. The units he put up are fabulous. I would love to live there. It can happen. He had to dig out six feet of soil, haul six feet in. And he's doing another unit across the road. It can happen, folks, but we've gotta quit talking and start doing and think outside the box.
I just have a very simple question. Jim Markku. Ryan, what, what do you think about Habitat for Humanity? Not Habit for Profit Chicago, but Habitat for Humanity that has been so successful in Holland and other places along the coast. And then how does the council feel about Habitat for Humanity?
I was on the board of Habitat for Humanity for a number of years. I think it's a great organization.
I know they'd like to come to South Haven. And in fact, I'm working with some folks to see what we can do. I don't even know if that's a possibility for Overton. I really don't, but I'm just curious to hear what you all thought about it, so. I see thumbs up. Thank you.
Mary Lynn Boogie, I would like to point out again, and I pointed this out when the first, when the last master plan was adopted, if you're going to have reasonable-priced housing, you cannot have it all within the city. You must, must look beyond the city limits. We're a tiny little city, we're pretty well-built out. You have to look out into the township to think you're gonna solve it by adding second units on a lot and things like that. It's just not feasible. Because those second units would have to be deeded, not to be on short-term rentals. Who's gonna enforce the deeds, so on and so forth. There's a very, very, very great concerns regarding something like that because it'll be abused, just like other things in this town have been abused when they're supposed to be a privilege. So please, please, look beyond the city limits. You can go across the street and be in the township. It's just as convenient. Also, I'll point out that the township is much more convenient for grocery stores, big-box stores, getting things, getting supplies and things like that. So don't just think about it as being within the city. One quick question beyond mine, two minutes. And I think Mary may have asked you this, your statistics. I didn't know whether they're within city, township, what they're representing, so I wasn't really clear precisely what you were saying. And again, and when you're considering it, the statistics can't just be for the city because you go across the street, you're in the township. So we need to have a much broader scope as to where we're looking for houses of different prices, not just within the city. And because it also is a very desirable place, it's by the water, that makes it much more expensive. So you're gonna have to go a block farther away, so what?
Hi, I just wanted to make one quick statement because I've heard the term hard a couple of times. This isn't actually hard. This just requires some confidence and some willpower to get it done.
Yeah, Mr., is there any questions you can ask over to Ryan?
So...
Go ahead, George.
So the one thing I was gonna talk about is, is we, this exercise, we kind of got our opinions, which is good. But I think there might be other stakeholders, like for example, you know, a potential developer or someone like that, that might also have good ideas. So my idea, you know, I'm flexible enough, I'd be willing to adjust my ideas to accommodate either, you know, better quality product or more likelihood of getting some grant money or anything like that, just to get to a successful outcome. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I think you kind of talked about this, is that, you know, if, if what we as a council propose doesn't fit for a successful outcome, I think a lot of us are probably willing to adjust it to get to a successful outcome.
Towards that end, so in Harbor Shores, it would be nice to know their development process. Because if it was successful, what did they do? How did they get there? That would be helpful. Trying to address it more broadly and more promptly. I mean, what can we do in the interim? Because this is not going to happen overnight and we may not even have it by the end of the year. But what, but there are things that we should be able to do relatively quickly. I mean, can we have an ad hoc group? You know, do we vote on that at the next city council meeting to start looking at housing? Can we make a motion tonight? Can we have another group look at amendments to the zoning ordinance? I know we're in, going through the recodification and I hope to have a better understanding of what the consultant plans to roll out at the meeting next week. But from what I've seen, certain things did not change that I thought would be facilitative of more affordable housing. Duplexes, quadruplexes, and that hasn't been there. And it's probably because it's a policy decision that has to be either handled by planning commission first or directed by city council for planning commission to handle it. And last, what incentives can we do right now for the planned unit developments that are outside of the STR cap to entice them to give to year-round deed restricts? So they're not SDRs that would help them meet the difference between what an STR income-producing would give to encourage home ownership? And can we go back and revisit some of the agreements, you know, the phases that have already been approved? Because in Trailside, the townhomes are going up next, and those are perfect.
I'll speak in the part that you know if I can remember the SDR. There's a couple things that you said about, you know, can there be an ad hoc committee? I think we can look at that. But the first thing, and this is why Ryan was brought back, she was, I'll figure out, what do you all want? And how do we get you what you need? We need to look at, and that's what you went through, the decision making with the goal. And trying to figure out, what can we do to get you what you want for this side so we can get moving on it? If there is a lot of confusion in council, there's no, what is the income or where we want to go? Does that mean we need to hit the reset button? Do we need to have another cooldown and then finish up? Does that mean we need to hit the reset button? Do we need to come back here and do a, a, we need to get the master plan and the housing workshops to level seven or something where everything needs to be? We went through it pretty quickly for about a half an hour and a half. We kind of walked through where the costs are, what the, what the income levels are, things like that. Or does council want to say, hey, we know what we want. We want this kind of density, we want this kind of housing typology. We want this amount of density, we want to know what people are looking to do. If that means we do some, some making of, or changing your minds in the next council, the idea is that we're ready to report and run, or the other council, we're gonna figure out, is this where, this is what we got from you? Does that still hold true? Because ultimately, it doesn't, it doesn't help if we get an ad hoc committee and they put together something and none of you ever, none of you guys know it, right? So we need to know in general terms, where do you want to head? So that there are metrics for our, to structure any category, any category standing forward.
So what I was going to add is, so I was at MML training over the weekend. And one thing that, I think one of the biggest things I took home is that it helps if we have options that are brought forward. So not, so we, we may think we know what we want, but we don't know what all the options are. So sometimes it helps to have a sliding scale of this is what you get with this, but if you turn, if you tweak it this way, you'll get this, if you tweak it this way, you'll get this. Can we do something in between? So it helps to have options as opposed to just one recommendation.
I think based on what I've heard tonight and what I saw in your initial responses, I think that's what we'll build into the report. And we'll do that pretty quickly. So I'll take your feedback and I'll say, this is how I'm distilling it, right? This is what I'm hearing from you. And then I'll say, with that feedback, I would recommend these three potential options, right? And I'll try to give you an estimated timeframe, right? It's kind of loose. An estimated amount of subsidy that it's gonna need. And maybe like an estimated level of difficulty, right? This is pretty easy to get approved versus, you know, there's a gauntlet of bureaucracy that you have to go through. We were here earlier, it might be hard, but we can do hard things, right? And so we'll make sure that you've got those at least three options to be thinking about and what the trade-offs are.
And towards that is, I think, Dan, now in terms of put all of our eggs in the Overton basket, are there other parcels in our area that are shovel-ready? Where we could start right away and we don't have the same hurdles?
That you own, no.
That we could easily acquire?
Well, that's the, that's the, that's the big question, is that how much can you acquire that a developer can't? I don't know that, right?
But it's, what are the options?
Well, unless we're doing another round of questions, I'm not gonna take your question for granted, Ryan.
No.
But as a neighbor...
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight. And what I like to hear were the people who basically said, get her done. And let's get to work, have the confidence. And so I am really encouraged by hearing that.
Any other council comments? Well, if there's nothing else for seven thirty-five, I'll be there. Do you want to pull this in, leaving adjourned, Mary?
Okay, if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.